James come back? Okay, so it's three o'clock.
You're on the record.
Three o'clock in the banking session and we're going back to number nine. That's discussion of possible action regarding the road and bridge administrator and personnel and I put that on there. And Jeff, I guess Mr. Busman said that you have the option, we can do it either do it out here or we can do it in post-session, it's up to you.
Fine, out here.
Fine, out here? Right. The reason that I put this on here, since we've been having like, I guess numerous road and bridge complaints, which I brought up before, which I have been asking for some plans for and some like long-range term planning for, and we've been making a lot of emergency amendments, but I'm not sure if they qualify as emergencies continually to the road and bridge budget. And I think there's some things that I know that Pete has talked to Jeff about and I've talked to Jeff about, and I think that there's just some, we're too all over the map with this road and bridge thing right now with complaints pouring in and what we need to be doing with it and the direction that it needs to be going in.
We get a lot of phone calls. I have. A man just talked to me, said, "Desire to bridge or setting on road 208, how come he didn't finish it? Started working, didn't finish it." I get complaints like that all the time. Lot of stuff to do, they pull off, we do something else, we just take care of it, we work through what has to be done. I can say that Jeff has done a lot of good things for the county, thank you, that I'm asking for. Tommy asks to do something, he tries to get it done, and complain about that. We can go a long ways back, but we go back to the bond election that passed, I told him, you need to get us, to get something done, don't run out of money. Well, he ran out of money on road, on material. He said, "Yeah, I'm working on it, I'm getting it maxed." I wrote it twice about it, more commended twice here in Commissioner's Court. However, I had time, I had to put it on the agenda for him to come up and get busy and get a plan. But he got a plan. I don't remember till March, April before we got the plan passed, is that right?
That's close.
Anyway, he spent his money and he did, and he ran out of money. Now, he's using other funds that were in both for buying material. I don't know how that stands, but hopefully the bond resales this month. So, it's a plan.
Well, there's a bunch of legal hoops that they have to cope through and I'm not sure what those are. We approved the selling, and I emailed Bob Anderson today that we approved the selling of the bonds here in court. And I've asked Moana what's, you know, what usually is the holdup and it's the jumping through the hoops and legalities. That's why we need those plans ahead of time, is when we get the money, when we approve the money, we don't necessarily have it just right away to be able to use. That's one of the toughest things.
And like I said, Jeff's done a lot of good things for us. He knows the roads and it's an uphill job all the way, we know that. We've got more that can be taken care of easily, but he needs to do some planning ahead and get things organized so they can get done. I don't think Jeff's a good administrator, he's a good worker, but he's not a good administrator. Like, today, what are all the employees doing in here? Are they all invited to? They invited?
What's on your agenda, Peter?
The road and bridge personnel and administrator personnel. Is that why they're here, they're invited?
Personnel is here.
At another meeting, they don't have to be invited. And when you say personnel issues, you darn right you're gonna show up.
Okay, but it's not a public hearing, so let's not start getting all into all that.
I'm not getting all into that, that's why they're here.
Okay, stop, please. That's why, so let's stop. We're gonna keep it up here, public comments earlier, it's gonna stop. If you can't stop, please leave.
No, I'm not gonna leave.
Please let us do this. You are out of line, please let us do this.
No, I'm not out of line.
Ms. Malone, you are out of line, I'm gonna ask you one more time to please stop.
Okay, you put, you, I'm sorry, excuse me, you put this on the agenda, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. This is to, for all of us here to discuss or give our opinion on what we think that Jeff and his personnel are doing, or is this for him to come up here and talk to us, or his personnel come and give us his side of the story? What are we here for?
Okay, let me tell you what's been going on, so you can have more of a background of this. And likely, I have gotten numerous visits from personnel, phone calls from personnel, that they feel that the road and bridge department's falling apart. And the other day, Bob and Betty, Bob Busman and Betty Yarder, were in here. And we sat here and we had discussions, and then the phone calls keep coming in, that they feel that, they don't know what they need to do, and they're coming to me and asking me to help them plan, or help them write, or help them do. And it's not my job to do the road and bridge administrator job. And so, it comes back to an administration thing, is I can't fix those problems, I can't dictate to them, I can't tell them what statute is. It's very easy. You know, you just gotta follow the statute. But I'm not going to get in the middle of the employees and the road and bridge administrator. And it seems like there's been a very large breakdown somewhere, when all these people start calling me or coming in. And it's been since the, from the last meeting till this meeting, it's gotten a lot worse. Just about, what do we need to do with this, or what do we need to do with this? And that's where...
It should be administrator with his own personnel, we should have to deal with that. We should just have to deal with the administrator itself.
First of all, y'all called the meeting without me even knowing about it. First of all, I don't think any employee needs to come here and ask for equipment. I'm starting the budget for this year, nobody started working on their budgets. I am working on the budget. I've got some employees here that seen my budget, I'm working on it. And I did start, and I got equipment on there that I wanna replace and I wanna work with. We did the proposal for you twice on what you wanted, and you told me twice it wasn't what you wanted. Y'all didn't know what y'all wanted. And, and when I talked to you about it, get it done. We get it done, we hand it to you and was wrong. And, and on here it states, if you would read it, it states over here, this is the first, and the second will come, the third will come.
I've seen this one, Jeff.
Yeah, we get it and y'all have accepted it.
But what, what is happening now, there's something going on at road and bridge, there's something going on over there, where it's personnel against personnel, or personnel that end up in here. I'm not sure exactly what's going on.
There's two people in one piece, and that's gonna change. If I have to get rid of some people, I will change it, and I'm fixing on doing some changes here pretty quick, if I get to staying. And I'm not gonna have anybody walk on top of me when I'm trying to get a damn job done. Nobody.
Jeff, the personnel and everything, I know what Pete said, you know, about the, about getting something straight and getting an agenda for the roads and all that. I know, I beat this one to death already, I've said it a few times. I did it for eight years, and you can set an agenda, you were a county, you were a county, now you run law enforcement, but you did it up here with one. When you set an agenda for the county roads, I don't care who you are, if you have four years of college, if you don't have four years of college, if you graduated high school, if you got eight years of college, when you're working with the roads, yes, it, you know, yeah, of course you gotta be smart and everything, but a lot of it is common knowledge too, because, I mean, it doesn't take college to tell, to be able to tell that, to be able to tell that a road needs base material, that it needs a ditch cut. I did it for eight years, and we would set like an agenda, and the guys that I had, they were great, they were Class A, they were Class A act. I mean, I couldn't have done it without them. But, look, when we would set something for the roads and everything, the first time you get two or three inches of the road, bam, you backed up 30 days. And that was with one precinct. So, I don't know, you probably backed them, what, 60 days, and you get a big old rain, you know, and if you have an agenda, you tell all these people that you're gonna do this, and they're waiting for you, but you get a big old rain, two or three, four, five inches, you can't keep going on that agenda, 'cause you've got ruts across roads over here that you gotta go back and blade, am I right?
We gotta, after the 10-inch rain, we are still not caught up with fixing the damaging roots.
Right. So, what, are you gonna keep going on your agenda, forget about everyone else that got ruts on the roads 'cause of the rain?
No, it doesn't.
No, you're gonna back up and you're gonna take care of that, 'cause other school bus routes, those are all kinds of things. I've been there, I've done it. If you haven't sat there or stood in that man's shoes, you don't know what you're talking about. I have, so I know the hell he's going to do over there. And he's doing four, not just one. I did one, one. I can only imagine what that man has to put through. Four of them? Four? 12,000 people calling you, telling you this, telling you that, and the personnel that you got is great, I mean, I know they're great, they're excellent, they're Class A too. I don't know if y'all have any issues or something, you know, if y'all have any issues, but in any department, you're gonna have issues. There's nowhere that it's perfect. You tell me one department is perfect here in this county, tell me, and it'd be bull. It's not, it's not, it's not perfect, nothing's perfect, but you gotta work with what you got. But there's no way that, I'm telling you, 'cause I stood in those shoes, I did it for eight years. You can only put, you can, you can figure something out, to set an agenda, but the first time that something gets in the way, it backs you up, it throws you behind. And that was in one precinct. I've never ran four precincts.
Well, I can tell you the main reason why he's behind, is he don't have no equipment. He got three or four maintainers and they're all junk. You run them three days and they, they're tired and they're more out, they don't wanna run no more. They're like us, we're old, we need some new stuff to work with.
A lot of that's planning and being prepared. If we keep amending the...
Well, it all just fell off.
Right. And if we, but if we keep doing these amendments, how long can we declare them emergencies? Legally declare them emergencies? I mean, we're doing it because it needs to be done for the citizens. I mean, but it becomes, it becomes iffy there. We're riding a fine line in there somewhere.
Can anybody sitting on this court tell me what his budget was prior to the unit system?
No.
I mean, all four precincts combined prior to the unit system and what it is now?
No, I don't know.
Okay. Well, there's a few things that I could say from the very beginning. The unit system's fine, that's a great deal, but you have the same amount of money in the budget, you have the same old wore-out equipment, you have the same amount of employees, how do you really expect to get any more work done? Okay? Because you got the same employees, the same equipment, the same amount of money in the budget.
Jeff, I'm sorry. Jeff, how much do you have in the, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to, I apologize. How much money do you have, what do you get, what did you get last year? I'm sorry, do we do it all, I can't remember, I know you should remember your own.
Yeah, I'll find out, I don't recall what it is.
Do you remember, was it maybe a one, 900,000?
No, we went up, I know on material, we went up Waylon's material.
What we'll be doing is when we were all, when we were all up here, us four, we did our, what was it, like 800,000? We were getting like 200,000 apiece?
Yeah.
So, that, what did it come up, what did it come up to, $1,400 a mile?
Yes, sir.
14, 1,472 dollars a mile, we figured it out, remember? 'Cause I had a big meeting in Gillette one time, and they were asking me why we didn't fix a road, and I sat down and I showed them, we get $1,400 a mile, that's for, that's for, to pay the employees, that's for gravel, that's for diesel, that's to run the trucks, that's for breakdown, that's for maintainers. You know what, when I walked out, they shook my hand, they go, "And y'all still, y'all still managed to do it?" But, you know, a lot of people don't ask, they don't know exactly how much money per mile you have.
But you need to stop and look out the window, what the hell's going on in Cornish County right now. Look at what the hell's happening to the roads. My employees are sitting here right now, and every one of these boys can tell you, we fixed them damn roads, excuse my language, 'cause I'm a little upset with some damn people. We took and worked on some damn roads, 326 Tracy drives it, what's happening to that road Tracy?
Well, it's, it's good, then it gets tore up.
Exactly.
Trucks, cars.
Six months into the workings, the road's falling apart, and are you gonna get ahead of this? Nobody's gonna get ahead of this, I don't give a damn who you put in here. You can bring H.B. Zachary in here and spend every damn dollar you got, you ain't gonna fix these damn roads, 'cause there's no end to this.
334, 340. I know which one they are. They're heavily traveled by the trucks, so when that happens, they...
Beavis County's doing an impact study right now, and gentlemen, come and talk to me about it. I told you about, I think I told some of you guys about the impact study. Per tire is 7,500 plus PSI pressure on every inch of the road.
We were used to, you were, when I did it, we were used to working on the equipment ourselves, we're used to working on older equipment, and that was with one precinct. Yeah, I'll tell y'all, I'll tell y'all what here, and I could be, could be making a mistake. You bring in an engineer, you think an engineer's gonna sit here and, and play around with those old, that old equipment that I used to work with, the old equipment you used to work with? No, they're gonna come at the start of the budget, and they're gonna say, "I want this and this and this and this and this and this and that." And if we don't agree with that, there's anything that happens on the county roads and everything, he's not gonna lose his license, he's gonna chuck it right back at us and say, "We asked you for $3 million this year."
Old, please, they...
They're not gonna be working on crap, they're not, excuse me, it's not...
The oldest thing we got is over 40 years old.
That meeting we had the other day, that wasn't about any personnel, all it was, was about equipment. There's equipment that's sitting out there, in repair, we gotta have something replacing. We can't have the thing in shop all the time.
And, but...
That's what I asked for.
Right.
Is equipment, nothing about the personnel, the job they're doing.
You see, Jeff's having a hard time. The sheriff, we replaced, we started replacing the vehicles, every, you asked for every two years, right? You wanted new vehicles?
I had a plan, I had a plan, 2005, what we're gonna do, replace vehicles, 100,000, 125,000.
Right, and it worked out, right? The way you wanted it, that's the way we've been doing it for you, it worked out, it worked out, it worked out. But, but he has new equipment to work with, he has everything that he needs to work with.
That's why I'm gonna start, I'm working on my list, and like with the heavy equipment, most of the dealers of the heavy equipment have a five-year buyback plan on equipment. If you look at the overall picture, if you run a piece of equipment for five years, they'll buy this at top dollar back, and they bring you a brand-new one to replace it, and you get rolling again. And I believe this will save Cornish County a lot of money down the line by doing that, instead of having machines that are 40 years old and everybody screaming, "Hollering, we ain't getting nothing done." Right now, we have three trucks sitting in Kennedy at a shop, being worked on. One truck got 700,000 miles. You know, what do you expect? They're gonna wear out. And then why ain't the job getting done? The road running around chasing parts.
Well, yeah, where the sheriff, the Tahoe's at 25,000 dollars apiece, the maintainers, what, 125,000?
80, 200.
200,000 dollars from one maintainer. You know, that's a different ballgame.
You go back, you go back, meeting of where the equipment just started off.
But it comes out about the same thing, a vehicle, what do you put, about every two years you gotta replace it? A maintainer will go 20 years.
But that's not our job to figure out that it's at budget time, and that needs to be brought to us as a plan. That's, you know, that's...
That's what we want.
That's what I'm telling you, I'm working on a budget, but I can't bring to y'all in the middle of the year, "Well, I'm asking for a mechanic truck because we lost a truck, we're out of pickup." I got some of my employees the other day were not using their personal pickups. I thought I was gonna have to bring my truck out, because mine was broke down too, and I thought I was gonna have to use mine. We're hurt.
But, but if we foresee all this, and we bring it in and say, you know, there's a, I'm foreseeing something, but how many times have we amended your budget, Jeff? That's where we're gonna get into a bind. And we keep declaring it an emergency, but how many times have we amended your budget for how much? Moana, do you know? I mean, I know it's quite, quite a few times.
Couldn't give you a count, I can, I just text Michelle and got the actual budget dollars right now, but I don't know how many we amended or anything like that. Current road and bridge budget's 1.6 million, and road and bridge specialist's 559,988. So, we've got over $2 million budgeted for road and bridge expenditures right now.
You know, traditionally...
Not accounting the bond monies.
You know, if he's not spending any money, you think he's doing a good job, but if he's not spending money, you know, and this stuff is not getting replaced, and I think that 4430, John Deere told me we had about $30,000 in it. That was before Jeffrey. But, I mean, the man picked up all the receipts there in the tractor city and said, "You realize you've spent $30,000 on a tractor that's worth $6,000 or $7,000?" I mean, that's, I mean, you just can't do it. And he's telling you, he don't wanna do this anymore, I mean, he wants to get some new stuff, and this stuff needs to be replaced.
What, Betty?
The number of years on the budget, you've been doing this?
17 months, I know of.
Jeff, if there's the, the personnel that's with you right now, is it 'cause they're mad with you, or is that why they're here? 'Cause they're pissed off, or they got something mad to say about you today?
It's pretty.
Or is it because they're, they're backing you up right now? I'm sorry, I have, I'm just, I see a lot of personnel here.
Well, it gets pretty disgusting, you get on a piece of equipment, and you came to make it out of the yard sometimes. And then we gotta sit there and try to get this equipment running, or a guy's gotta get out of the yard, and, or you leave, and somebody calls in and says, "Hey, a truck broke down, can you come get me so we can make it to work, or we're going to a tractor or whatever?" It, I couldn't forecast, at the beginning of the year, we didn't have the money to jump out and buy equipment. Pete asked me about a few maintainers, and I said, "Pete, let's, let's ride another year and see what's gonna happen with Cornish County." I was County Commissioner long enough to understand, let's not jump in and spend money because we got money. I said, "Let's ride a year." I think the equipment righted, but I didn't expect, I couldn't foresee him to crystal ball or try to grab out of the sky where we were at with this equipment. It's taken a toll. This county's huge, it's 586 miles of road out there. And you start pushing that old equipment, I made that when the road unit system was coming in, I said, "Y'all need to evaluate the equipment that the county has and see if you can do this and afford to do this." It was at the time when it was all said, and everybody told me at that time, I didn't know what I was talking about. We're in it, we gotta make it work. I wanna make it work. And we're working on it, but it ain't gonna get fixed overnight. It ain't gonna get happening, or two or not. I wish my friend Frank Montes would still be alive, because I'd like to have him here to explain how many years it took him in Keyville just to get roaded. He said it took him 15 years before they seen results. And we've got all companies stomping us.
Frank Montes, I knew a person of the two, but I didn't know, I don't know of his education or anything like that. He did the, he was in the unit, so he did the unit system on his...
He was running the blades for the, when they came in into the road system, he was running the blade for one of the commissioners, and became the road administrator for the county.
So, did he have an engineer degree?
No, sir.
And how long did he do it?
32 years.
And the roads in Beaver all paved?
Yes, sir.
Well, in Beaver, maybe they work together a little bit more than we do here. I mean, we need all...
I just tried to make a point.
And just quit all this bickering and stuff, and all chip in and find us a solution. You know, it's good, it's easy to just blame it on Jeffrey and want to fire him, I think that's what's taking place here. I mean, evidently, this guy placed on the agenda for some reason, nobody's, is it to fire him?
Carl, there is a lot going on there. I mean, if, if, I mean, do you want my motion, is that what you're asking for?
No, I'm asking you, why do you place this on the agenda?
I placed it on the agenda because I perceive that there's problems in the road and bridge system, but when they're coming to me and asking me to help them budget, okay, number one, in statute, I'm not supposed to do that. He's supposed to do it. And I'm not gonna get myself in some nine-line bind or pickle for anybody. I'm not gonna do it.
And we're just getting where we're gonna be starting a budget. Why does anybody come in and start asking for equipment in the middle of the year?
It wasn't just, it wasn't just equipment.
Well, you shouldn't. Well, it's employees too, because I need employees, but we're waiting for the physical year to be over with. If my God lets wait until October, I'm gonna ask for what we need for this coming here, and let's go from there.
I mean, I think there's just, I think that there's a lot of problems, we're getting a lot of phone calls. And Jeff, I know it's hard, I know some of the oilfield companies are trying to help you. I realize that and I understand all that, but we should be further than we are now. And nobody can look in a crystal ball, not even asking anybody to, but that's how county governments run. They run a year...
In a week's time, you can go a mile forward and you're gonna be back, and half of my last week's gentleman, back. Every one of them work out there. You're looking from the outside and the inside, and believe me, when you get out there on the roads, it's different.
And I understand that it might be different, Jeff, but they should be coming to you with that stuff, and if they feel that you're not giving answers, which is what they were telling you, I don't know.
Hold on a minute, y'all talking, all kinds of rumors.
I came over there, Jeff, you talked, you said...
Edwin, why do you think it's specifically you? It's not just you that's the problem.
Well, I, I was the one that come up, I guess, sort of, honey pot. But anyway, what I've got right now is people against each other. We all gotta work together to get this accomplished. If y'all wanna fight against us, as far as, don't give us equipment, that's good, y'all do it, but that's y'all's responsibility. We gotta work together.
Okay, Edwin, I don't think that's been done.
Well, it don't work like that. It works...
I mean, honestly, y'all, y'all can help out, y'all can go out there and try and do something to get us some more equipment, 'cause shit doesn't run.
But that, and please, let's not use that kind of language.
I'm sorry.
It's not necessary.
It doesn't run.
Points are well taken without expletives.
I have a comment for all the operators that are in here. Yes, sir. It's 105 degrees outside, here inside the maintainers, 120 inside the maintain, all you guys, a little fan up here trying to keep it cool. Can't run all day in that heat like it. Equipment's old, I took one maintainer, last week, Jeff.
Last week, too?
Left y'all with it three times. Get down by the, cross the creek bridge, going to Edelman, turn around and come back. Take off second time, after trying to come back, third time, injector pump finally started leaking, diesel everywhere. This equipment is falling apart. I understand, it's budget time, we have to get all this stuff, we all have to work together, there's not, there's no I in team, we can all work together, fix it amongst ourselves, which I thought we were all trying to work with, but apparently, those people have different ideas. I mean, yes, I called you and talked to you about that one day. I know I did. That was a problem in the Bonzo area, 'cause I couldn't get in touch with him. Hasn't been resolved.
Was that resolved?
Yes, sir. And on your question as to why all of us are here, we're here on our own accord, because we wanna see what's happening firsthand, instead of having to hear it from y'all or down the road. We wanna know what's going on.
Yes, sir. I didn't mean any disrespect, but...
No, I know, I know, James, I know. I just, I just wanted, nobody answered the questions, I'm answering it for you.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, that's appreciated.
I just personally think, and, I mean, Mr. Busman knows why I put this on the agenda in this yard, knows who I did, I think that you need more organization. I think Jeff is a great person, I think he does great working on the roads. I don't think he knows how to organize it, prepare it, get it ready, or do his budget.
Well, I'm sorry, I don't...
Yours, go ahead.
Well, you know, they, and I'm not saying that you don't know how to organize or anything, 'cause I know you've been doing this for years and years and years, and I'm not holding your hand going through there and, you know, watching you do it, but like, they send all of us for training and classes, is there, not that you need, I'm not saying, no disrespect that you need it or anything, but is there anything that, we send everybody else to classes, we send ourselves to classes, is there anything that we can do for Jeff to send him to these classes, or send him to some kind of schooling to work? Maybe he can be more, not in any bad way, Jeff, okay, don't take this in a bad way at all, but I don't, you know, I don't wanna make it sound bad, but to, where he could be more educated on what he's doing, if, you know, we're saying that, well, I'm not saying, but you know, well, you know, because Commissioner's Court either way, saying that you're not organizing and riding and everything, there's always classes or schooling for everything, and, you know, and then there's conferences that...
There's other...
I, I put it in his box all the time.
Right, but, you know, you said, oh, well, you go to the, some of the conferences, right?
I went to Road and Bridge last year to the conference in San Antonio.
Well, you see, I mean...
They got a lot of good information.
Okay, well, he could go to the, he could go to the conferences and stuff like that, just learn, you know, learn a little bit, we all need to learn a little bit more, 'cause ain't nobody here Einstein, you know, I gotta learn a lot. I gotta, every day I learn something. Well, maybe Mr. Busman.
I think, I think we all need to learn something, but that's...
Judge, you went back to the physical year, and I, I just, physical year, when we started this physical year, I asked for two belly dumps, and I asked for two tractors. At that time, we were denied of the tractors. I also asked for one new pickup, because I knew the pickups, what we had, I got denied the pickup. And you were asking about the budget, and you said, "Budget wasn't prepared." I did have a small budget prepared to try to start working forward, I got stomped down on it. So, you know, don't return and say that didn't have a budget prepared. We were working on it, trying to start a 10-year program. And I can't start it if it don't start here. Now, I'm working on a new one, but I don't want employees coming in here and starting something in the middle of the year, because it works physical year to physical year.
Jeffrey, I don't think we cut your budget down, I think what we said was...
You didn't cut the budget down, Pete, I asked for, you know, the, the equipment, it wasn't granted, that's what I'm saying.
We put all the material, we didn't give the trucks, new truck, we gave it, gave it all the material and said it should be there, if you had that truck...
I understand, but you know where I'm saying, that's what I was saying. I asked for equipment and didn't get it.
Let me see something. My dad worked for the county government here, Robbie's grandfather. Back when my dad was here, Bill Nichols was the commissioner. He committed, the equipment was so sorry that they couldn't even use a county truck to go out of county, because it wouldn't pass inspection. And they couldn't go to DeGroutles and get what they needed asphalt or whatever, because the trucks wouldn't make it. So, historically, this is the way it's gonna operate, on a shoestring. Why was it like that? Well, it was necessary. They didn't have the money. And I know, I live in town, I was born and raised in this county. And we have a little piece of land out, and it's in the country, it's not in town, it's in the country. But I saw many, many times of a maintainer come by, they haul in the collegiate and put your word lungs, and then they grow, go through and grade it up, and they grade it over in ditch on the other side. And that's been going on for 100 years maybe, or less. And if you look at, if you look at the county road that goes by the farm, the ditches on the side are higher than the road bed. And so, when it rains, water runs right down the middle of the road, they gotta start all over again. But this has been going on for years and years, together with no equipment, low wages and the whole bit, it's just been the way it is. Now, you finally have, or we finally have, an opportunity to change that. It's coming from the shape. To be honest with you personally, I'm a little skeptical about how long this is gonna last. Hopefully, it'll last forever, but I have no doubt about it. But there is a limit to it, and you can get way out of line, spin yourself right into bank... And you can get way out of line and spin yourself right into bankruptcy before you know what's happened. Now Jeff, Jeff likes to operate the equipment, let's face it. Jeff, I think you and I have talked about that. The problem is, when he sees something needs to be done, Robbie back here is my nephew. He may not that admit that, Jeff.
Bob, I'm sorry, we appreciate your history lesson, but that's enough.
All right, no, it isn't, not really, Judge.
But thank you.
Because here we are. We have an opportunity to make a change, and let's make a change.
How long ago was the unit, uh, bridge system voted in?
I don't know.
Four years.
Four years ago. Gotta start going forward somewhere.
Yes, but is it the right thing to do?
I think, I think Jeff does great on the equipment. I agree with you there, but I don't think on the organization and the administration part he does. And I have that on the agenda.
That's what I was getting to before you interrupted.
But thank you.
When Jeff sees something that needs to be done, he does it. And that's something he needs to break. That habit needs to kind of lit up on a little bit and start delegating this thing. He's got some good people.
By statute, he's supposed to be administrator.
I understand.
And we've got that statute.
He's with the law's good.
Anyway, uh, I guess our thirty minutes are up on this deal. I think that, I think Jeff does a wonderful job being on the equipment and doing the equipment. I think his organizational skills and his administrative skills, I think he falls short of. Therefore, my motion is today to remove Jeff as Roden Bridge Administrator and allow Ricky Jalapco to fill in temporary and to take applications for a Roden Bridge Administrator.
Problem is, who's gonna take this case?
Well, we'll have to take applications to get a Roden Bridge Administrator.
I'll say something before we.
I won't take an internship.
That's fine, we'll just have to find a committee to put him in. It's still, it's still my motion. We need a Roden Bridge Administrator, somebody that can organize, to plan, to be prepared, and to work by statute to get us moving forward. It has to happen.
Why don't y'all leave him in there till y'all find somebody? I mean, y'all, y'all push him out, let him stay there till y'all find somebody. What's, what's the matter with that?
I'm sorry. Okay, and I'm just trying to get the, just get this straight. You're voting to get him out and just hire another more administrator, not an engineer?
An engineer if necessary. We need somebody that can organize, get together, we have bridges buckling. We have a school bus go down because of the bridge, or if we have something happen, it's gonna be our fault to commission or support because we're not, we're not making the Roden Bridge Administrator follow statute. We should have policy for the Roden Bridge Administrator. I printed all the statute, I printed all the opinions from Ross, I printed all everything, printed all everything that Bob printed me. We are so far out of compliance, it's not funny. And we've got to do something to move forward.
Basically, if we start, if we get rid, we get rid of him, we start all over again. He's not even an engineer. Like everybody says, we need an engineer, which I say we don't. You know, I mean, I really don't. I just say we don't. But, you know, we start all over again. Jeff has experience, knows every road, you know, personnel wouldn't be here if he wasn't.
But that's to make you an administrator, that's where we're having issues.
Well, there's classes that we could send him to.
Can I make a comment to you, Judge? Were you really a judge? Because I, I take what, young lady?
Jeff?
I don't know. Now, I just wanna get something off my chest. You've called me a bunch of times late in the evenings, and I never really grasped what you were trying to tell me. You complained about, no.
Jeff, I've called you four or five times to let you know when there's a complaint on a road, or a leaky complaint.
But let me tell you what, the rest of the story, what you told me. You complained about every department in the county and bitched about this person, this person, and run everybody down in the department.
Jeff, that's not true.
Yes, it is, ma'am. And I'll tell you, because you've been complaining about some of the commissioners.
That's not what this is about.
Well, it is. I'm just asking you a simple question.
Jeff, I'm telling you, I don't think you're a good Roden Bridge Administrator, and that's what this is, and that's where this is gonna end. If I get voted down, that's fine, I'm fine by it. But I need somebody that's gonna be able to organize, plan, and administrate. There's too many people coming in here.
Working on a flag.
There are too many people coming in here complaining about.
And you're gonna keep having to judge, you see what's going on out there?
I've made my motion. Does anybody else have anything to say?
Well, if we hire a new person, he's gonna have the same problems, but he's still got the same old question.
He's still gotta get one of the questions.
You still, you still have to come up with an administrative plan.
All right, as I've said before, I think, I don't think Jeff, Jeffrey is, has done the administration job. Cause the reason I stayed, getting the bond thing ready, he did good, timely, and so forth. I know he tries. I would think that Jeffrey is still valuable to the county if he wants to stay on as assistant or as foreman or whatever. And we hired an administrator, and they could get along. It'd be, it'd be subject to the administrator, to, I think, working under him, of course, if we did that. I would be, it'd be acceptable to me to hire someone as administrator to take all the administrative duties. Jeffrey knows equipment, he knows the roads, he's available to the county. It's not, I mean, it's better if we get someone else to be a bully. Let him be subordinate. He'd be way someone to help him out. Yes.
Pete, this is in no way personal, because you're Commissioner of Precinct Two. He is a former Commissioner of Precinct Two.
Oh, my goodness.
It is not, it is not personal. Jeffrey and I have been personal friends for twenty years, at least. I don't think I ever had anything personal against him, and it's, and I'm, and it's not political. Is that what you're getting at, huh? No, it's not political, because I'm Precinct Two, that had nothing to do with it. If people don't want me in here, if I don't do something right, I don't please somebody, it's not gonna make any difference. I wanna do what's good for the county. I'm not looking for another election. If that's what you're getting at.
Well, I'm just saying, you know, not ever, maybe you're not happy with his performance, but I'm sure you have constituents that are not happy.
I think, let's stay with the Roden Bridge. My only concern is all the complaints that we're getting. We're getting them from the, from the, uh, people driving down these roads, the bridge is buckling, all kinds of stuff. And by statute, we need somebody to fix that and administrate. That was my whole deal, bringing this up. I didn't want it to get personal. If anybody wants to get personal, throw it out on the street.
That's gonna fix it. Why don't you?
I just think we need an administrator. I made the motion, was there not a second on my motion? Okay, then, I'm sorry.
Hold the phone, just a minute, Judge. Why don't you, Jeff, come and see? These four commissioners here are pledged and are by law required to help assist you in their commissioners, in their precinct. Use them. And if you have to do, if, if you, don't drive the machinery more than you have to. But I know that you, when you see something that needs to be done, you just do it. Robbie's the same way, I know Robbie, from the day he was born. Let's see, we can't get, if you have a problem with your budget, if you come to my office, I'll try to help you. I'm sure everybody else will too. Just ask for the help instead of trying to just go through it. Now, we're getting somewhere, if, if your people will come the same way.
Well, it's gonna take manpower, and it's gonna take money to fix the.
That's right, but you ain't gonna get the money, a whole lot of money until July.
That's what I'm saying, we can't jump out and start spending money, but we're getting destroyed by all companies right now.
Let's give it a shot. We don't wanna train a whole two a week. We might get an Aggie. How long you take, 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 would take to train an Aggie?
Bob, it's a school of engineering, they're all Aggies. It's A and M, it's a school of engineering, that's what they do, they train engineers.
Well, we still have to train them here, it's very difficult with Aggies. I got four of them, my family.
Thank you for genealogy lines. Just for your genealogy, one more. So can you go ahead and finish?
Lighten up.
Okay, in other words, I, what I said is, I wouldn't say my motion is just removed.
Okay, then my motion, I should have liked it a second, would you motion?
I would make a motion if we secure Roden Bridge Administrator and, subject to his approval, Jeffrey stay on with the county with his expertise. And.
You can only have one administrator, you know?
Yeah, that's by statute, you can just have one.
And there you go spending money on second personnel instead of putting.
So what is your motion, Pete, I missed it.
Motion is to secure Roden Bridge Administrator and allow Tracy, I mean, allow Jeffrey to stay on with the county as superintendent. I'll say give you the motion.
I'm sorry, go ahead. All in favor, say aye. Who said aye, I missed it. Now Jeffrey, you stay on. I'm sorry, I'm still writing.
Are we gonna hire a civil engineer, Pete, or just another? What kind of qualifications does this person have?
I'd be very, we don't have to put, it has to be an engineer, someone qualified.
Now, can I ask you something? I have, I haven't.
We're not from right there.
College, no college?
Best qualified person would be a qualified.
But this person, Jeffrey staying on, would be subject to this person's discretion.
Yeah, be subject to this person's discretion. What, to his discretion?
It'd be at Jeffrey's discretion.
Jeffrey, I've told you before that I think you're lacking in administrative.
It's all about the administrative end. I think Jeffrey works harder than anybody out there.
He's got a tough job.
Did I call him? You, uh, no. All in favor, say aye.
You did that.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. And I'm sorry. So the motion carries three zero.
You didn't say any opposed.
Oh, any opposed.[1572.24]